We are here today with Lydia Lath, who is running for county council. I cannot wait to kind of dive in and just help other people get to know who you are and why you are the candidate. So let's just start, you know, we're gonna take it, we're gonna go in a deep dive. So tell me a little bit about how your childhood or growing up influenced and led you kind of to this spot?
Yeah, thank you. So, I mean, gosh, a lot of different things. Our childhood is such a long time, but I was raised almost entirely in Edinburgh and grew up there. My dad was a history professor at Edinburgh and my mom was a social worker, is a social worker down in Meadville. And so I definitely had a lens of both knowing your history, knowing the context of the spaces you occupy and the power dynamics at play, but also as a, with that social work parent, you know, you have the helping people at every turn possible and to combine the two in my childhood, you know, was really powerful in kind of shaping my perspective of not only the world, but my role within the world and what my responsibility is to do good where I can. I also have a younger sister. Hi Izzy, if you're watching, I don't know if she'll watch this. But she, in grade school, was diagnosed with juvenile diabetes, which is the kind that you can't cure. And so from a very young age, I became more acutely aware of the healthcare systems and the complexities there, but it really wasn't until I was in college and my dad was diagnosed with cancer and then subsequently died before I graduated. But seeing both he and then after his death, my sister no longer had his healthcare coverage, which he had amazing healthcare coverage due to the fact that he was a professor with a great union. But seeing her then struggle with the healthcare system and all the barriers that she's had to face, you know, I saw even in my personal life, the ways in which systemic barriers made individual issues sometimes almost impossible to overcome. But we were always treated as if it was like a personal issue, that it was like, that was her issue to deal with and it wasn't any. But the reality was, she never chose to have diabetes, she never chose to have this barrier, this disability. And yet here she was facing sometimes intermountable odds, insurance companies telling her that her medication, that was life-saving equipment and medication was not, like, wasn't necessary, it was a luxury item. And so seeing that happen from an early age and then subsequently throughout my life, it's been a series of kind of that same theme again and again. So whether I was working with previously incarcerated men, re-entering into society and seeing the insurmountable barriers that they were facing and the cultural norms and systemic barriers that kind of led them down that path of criminal behavior or of the situations that brought them into the criminal legal system to begin with. And so then again, seeing kind of the way the systems that were meant to create safety, meant to support the community, were actually putting these men at higher risk, right? They were making finding a house more difficult, finding a job more difficult, accessing community and social supports more difficult. And so then I saw the ways in which our systems were not supporting these families because at the end of the day, whether they were incarcerated or not, they still had families, they still had parents that cared about them, they still had sisters and brothers and wives and children. And so to see them navigate that was just another reminder. And then, and I know I'm kind of getting outside of childhood, forgive me for going off on a tangent.
I think you're doing exactly where you need to go, absolutely.
But then going and being a trauma therapist to children and teens in Crawford County, I saw ways in which our education system was not meeting the needs of kids. And it wasn't for lack of caring people, like, there were so many caring staff members and people in these systems, but they were again given like insurmountable barriers to have to teach this group of kids and deal with severely traumatized children that have such specific needs. And these systems just were not set up again, like, it was systemic barriers that were preventing these people from reaching their fullest potential. And so seeing that with the kids I was working with. And then now I'm a social worker, working with refugees and immigrants in the city of Erie, and so I'm seeing again how our systems are just not made for certain people. And then we treat it as if it's their fault for not being able to succeed when these systems were just not made for them. And I just see this again and again. And so that's really, in a long-winded way, how I came to see the almost like life or death need for people to advocate at a systemic policy level for these changes and these policies that protect people and actually are based in the realities of people's lives. I saw so many times where policymakers would pass a decision that then in their efforts and in their wording, it was all about helping people and then seeing it trickle down to the ground level where the people were at, where I was picking up the pieces of people's lives with them after severe trauma and it was hurting them even more. And so to bring that experience, to bring that knowledge of what that looks like on the ground level, I think is something is powerful and it's why I'm doing this, because I've seen our shortcomings, I've also seen how amazing we are, I've seen us at our most resilient, I've seen kids that experienced such horrific traumas be able to come back and have such beautiful views of themselves in the world despite all the odds. And so I know what we're capable of, I know what we could accomplish if just given the space and time and resources to do so.
I think that this leads me to like the next, this beautiful segue, is you use the word systems and barriers and trauma and one area that I've seen you become pretty vocal on is just some of the things that are happening right now in the prison. So could you maybe walk us through a little bit of like using those same, like, how those systems and those barriers play out in what you've been most active on about the prison right now?
Yeah, absolutely. So in our Erie County prison system, for people that don't know, there's a specific policy called the so-called cost recovery program. It's a really nice way of talking about something that's really not nice at all. And the policy basically ensures that the families of incarcerated folks have to pay twice as much to get their family members like the most basic items. So hypothetically, like, say your glasses break tomorrow and you're in Erie County prison and I want to send you a hundred bucks for a new pair of glasses that you have to go get an eye exam for, so it costs you a hundred bucks. So I want to send that to you, but the Erie County prison takes 50% of that just because, they say they're doing it for behavior modification. So they take 50% of that. So now if I actually want to get you enough money to get your glasses, I have to pay twice as much. So it's not hurting the people on the inside, it's hurting the families on the outside because they're losing even more money. And they say it's for behavior modification, but as like a trauma therapist and a social worker, I can tell you that's not a healthy behavior modification tool. I mean, it feels almost akin to using a weapon to modify someone's behavior, like, threatening someone in order to get them to do what you think is right is not the healthy, ethical way to do it. And I think we're capable of so much better than that. And so I really think that that is just one example of many, that our policies don't reflect the research, they don't reflect the intentions and they don't reflect the positive progressive change that people are capable of. I truly believe that people are capable of change and that we are capable of so much more than we're actually doing right now and it's because we have policies like this that just are not helpful, they're actively holding people back, they're actively creating class inequality for people who have family members that they care about that are in our Erie County prison system. And the reality is, is these aren't outsiders, you know. Having worked with men who were previously incarcerated, we tend to talk about the prison system as if it's populated by people that aren't from our community, that it's like us and then them, and they just showed up out of the shadows and now they're here and now we have to like lock them up. But that's not it. The people that are locked up in Erie County prison are our neighbors, are our family members, are our friends, they are the man that we used to see every day walking down, like, they are people that were part of our community, that people in our community still care about. And so the moment we stop dehumanizing these people, I think we will be so much better for it and we will be able to capitalize on such amazing potential that we have locked away and that we have been stealing from, from the families. So this is just another long-winded way of saying, I think that there are many policies in which if we just changed one piece of it, if we just stopped stealing money from the families of incarcerated folks, we would see a lot more potential and a lot more growth in our community because we would not be stealing from people anymore.
So with the lived experiences that you've had, your professional experience that you've had, how does this all come together to make you like the candidate or to like help you in this seat? So just kind of like, I guess, expand on how you think that this, why you, why you?
Yeah, so, because I've seen it and I've heard it and I've experienced it. So whether I'm talking about personal experience, but I think more importantly, my professional experience as a trauma therapist, I don't talk about the light fluffy stuff. I don't, you know, just talk to you like I would at the grocery store in the checkout line, like, we get down to the nitty-gritty of people's lives and what it looks like on a daily basis, sometimes during the worst, hardest moments of their life. So when I talk about my experiences and knowledge of people's lives, like, I have probably the most intimate knowledge of people's lives that you could possibly have for some people because they're talking to me about some of the most horrific things that have happened and how they're coping with it and how, and their hopes for the future and their fears and their dreams. And so to take that knowledge and such depth of knowledge of people, I can bring those perspectives, I can carry those experiences with me to counsel in a way that no one else is and no one else can. And I hope that I'm not the only person that does this, like, I hope we see more helpers reaching out and seeking political office and seeking systemic policy level change because I think that that's really powerful. But I can bring the knowledge of what life looks like on the ground, you know? I'm not sitting up in like some ivory tower looking down at people or, you know, only have experience from a business perspective, I see people for their lives, for their humanity. I've talked to a young girl who had to process what it meant to see a parent overdose and how to process what it feels like when you don't know if your caregiver can take care of you anymore. And I've talked to teenagers about what it means to lose a friend to gun violence. And I've talked to incarcerated men about what it means to be treated like a monster when you feel like you're a good person. I've talked to refugees and immigrants about what it means to feel like an outsider or to feel like no one's gonna give you a chance or take you seriously because you can't speak perfect English. So I know what barriers are facing people, I know what it looks like to be in court-mandated therapy and not have transportation access to go to your therapist's office and really want to go get treatment but not have the means to do so and then get docked by your probation officer for not going to treatment. Like, I know how these barriers just keep piling on top of people countless times. And so that knowledge and experience are what I will bring not only to the decisions I make, but then to the questions I'm asking and the policies that I'm going to promote and encourage because at the end of the day, whether I'm working as a social worker or as some political person, my dream is to leave the world better than I've found it, right, to leave it in a place where they don't need me, right? Ideally, if I'm doing my job right as a social worker therapist, I work myself out of a job, that eventually I will have done enough preventative work that people aren't being traumatized in the way that they need my help. And similarly, I feel like if I've done my political job right, I've created policies and spaces in which equitable decisions are just inherently happening because we put the right structures in place to protect people's rights and to ensure equitable access and transparency and accountability. And so hopefully, I don't have to stay in this forever and that's, I don't want to, but I want to make it better so that I can stop picking up the pieces of people's lives for things that are entirely outside of their control.
Those are, I think, some deep profound answers and I'm curious, you know, we've gone through this journey with you just right now, how do you wind it down? Like, where's your favorite spot or your favorite self-care activity or a space that you would recommend that, you know, somebody who just needs a little like debrief time go?
Oh my gosh, well, I love Edinburgh and Washington Township where I live. And so my favorite spot to go is to go for a walk around Edinburgh's campus and to stop by Dairy Supreme on our way. I'm not sponsored by Dairy Supreme, but I could be. Just kidding. But I love going, getting like a chocolate malt from Dairy Supreme and then walking around town, like you said, you know, just for the fresh air and to see people that you know, like, there's nothing more exciting than walking down the street and like seeing someone you know. And that's the beauty of so many of our small towns and our rural pockets of the county is that you really know the people in your neighborhood and you know the people that you interact with. And I love to enjoy that and embrace that.
Love it. Lydia, if somebody wants to learn more about you and your candidacy, where can they check you out?
Oh, well, you can follow me on Facebook and Instagram at @electlydiaith and you can email me at electlydiaith@gmail.com.
Hello. My name is Herb Reedy and I'm running for Erie County Council for the 6th District in the Democratic primary to be held on Tuesday, May 18th. The 6th District includes the city of Quarry, the boroughs of Elgin, Edinburgh, Union City, Waterford and Watsburg, and the townships of Amity, Concord, Greenfield, LeBeuf, Union, Vanango, Washington, Waterford and Wayne. I'm a resident of Union Township. I was born in Erie, the sixth generation of Reedies that had immigrated directly from Germany to Erie in the 1800s. I'm also a 10th generation Pennsylvanian through a long maternal genealogy that includes service in the Union Army and pre-independence Pennsylvanians. Personally, I'm a senior developer or a computer programmer at a company in Erie as well as a small business owner with a computer repair accessories and general nerd store in Union City on Main Street that I own with my fiance Lisa. We both have experience in IT and education, from Lisa building and troubleshooting a computer in her program at EIT and working as a substitute at Union City and pursuing her masters in education at Edinburgh, to my having spent my entire life with technology and achieving a masters in education and learning in technology in order to make technology concepts understandable to the general public. Together, we have four children, twin 20-year-old daughters, with one working on a social work degree at California University, another who has given us our first granddaughter, who we love to spoil, a 15-year-old son who has weathered high school in this pandemic, the best way a gamer can do, and an eight-year-old who is obsessed with ESPN and just started Little League. Lisa's mom is also with us, so we have a multi-generational household with appointments to keep, games to be at, and we work to answer a lot of issues just like so many families. Lisa and I are also executive producers of Mr. Humanity's Team Humanity, a comedic web series being shot in and around New York City that we hope will entertain and re-energize people's confidence in getting out into the world and shopping again while having fun and laughing. We're in talks to bring some of the future shooting to Pennsylvania and we hope one of those shots could end up in Erie. It takes a minimum of 15-plus cast and crew to produce each of these videos and it's projects like these that we hope to bring positive attention to our area. But let's get to the politics. Regarding the Democratic primary, I've been a lifelong Democrat, served on county executive committees, been president for multiple terms of county Young Democrats, Democratic Club, and even served two terms on the Executive Board of the statewide Young Democrats as Correspondence Secretary and then Treasurer, establishing the Young Democrats' first website and hiring the organization's first executive director. I also represented all Pennsylvania Democrats under the age of 40 when I served as a delegation chair to the 2005 Young Democrats National Convention in San Francisco. Now, while I grew up in Northwest Pennsylvania, born in Erie, the birth of twin daughters drove me to find a good job in tech. So I became part of our brain drain and I moved to South Florida in 2000 to work for a dot com. There, I happened to be kept from voting in the 2000 election in South Florida. And that is the experience that inspired me to get involved in politics and specifically to care deeply in election integrity. Now, the dot com bust in 2001 led me to move back to Pennsylvania, the Gettysburg area, to work for a toy company. There, I became councilman of a small town called McSherrystown, which neighbors Hanover, where many of our potato chips are now from, roughly, McSherrystown is the size of Union City. I was then just 25, but I defeated a 30-plus-year incumbent and earned the nomination of both parties. Two years later, I was endorsed by the incumbent mayor to replace him and won a contested primary at the age of 25. After running on 24-hour police, replacing city-run garbage with an outside firm, and yes, even raising taxes to pay for the problems caused by the city-run garbage service, four years later, I was uncontested by either party for reelection. Unfortunately, both my mother and my father-in-law fell ill that year and we made a decision with the support of the company I worked for then to move back to the Northwest Pennsylvania area, bringing my job back to the area and reversing the brain drain. So that's my experience, getting involved where population is actually booming and increasing and where development is increasing and being carefully managed against sacred resources like the battlefield and green sites. Now, I'm back home in Erie County and I grew up bowling at Eastway Lanes or Bowlarama in Quarry or in Union City and going to Waldemere, picking up a dozen burgers at TJ's in Quarry and for the guys who were working on the car, going fishing, cutting through Mead Park to get to the Plaza, getting vegetables at Grant's Market in Union City, trying not to sled into the parking lot at Buyer's Fair or Big Wheel, swimming in the pool at the Union City Elementary School, climbing the peanut butter stairs at Bright Street and taking apart my computer to explain the parts to my classmates in EdTech in my freshman year at Edinburgh. But I digress. I've strayed from the political to the personal again. So let's get into what comes after the political to the governmental. I believe I am qualified to handle the decisions both as a member of council that represents the 6th District and yet needs to take the county's needs as a whole into account when making fiscal and policy decisions. Given the vast size of the budget and policies of the county, I'd like to state my guiding principles when it comes to the budget, the county policy and the code. I believe that all government actions are solemn and need to be taken seriously, whether it's a new law requiring non-discrimination because people need protection from one another and from companies because the companies and other people can't treat each other right without government intervention or supporting a charity or social service because the good works of the people are such that it requires the government and tax money to step in in order to make people whole and ensure the least of us don't fall through the cracks. I recognize that government is a power that is wielded with heavy and solemn responsibility that carries the weight of us all, but we must ensure that we work towards what is good yet makes us all free. Now, when we talk about the need to bring jobs to Erie County, we're often talking about things like healthcare and tourism. Sometimes we talk about the need to modernize and bring tech jobs to Erie County. The truth is, high-tech has always been in Erie County. As Union City and Quarry has leading companies in metal and fiberglass for the aerospace, marine and automotive industries, Quarry Manufacturing, MFG, LeBeuf, Hardwood, just to name a few. Before that, high-tech meant leading the world in furniture production at Union City Chair and locomotives at Climax and Quarry. The 6th District has more recently produced award-winning academic teams in robotics, published software authors like myself, and even a Quarry alumni, my brother, who was an Emmy Award-winning technical director for ABC News in New York that managed the feeds for world events as recent as the Royal Funeral. So we are and have been a high-tech leader for a long time. Yes, we like to fish, hunt, and we love the outdoors, but how do we get the jobs here? We must be aggressive and seek them out. Our cost of living is low. We must be willing to welcome new people to the area who want to fill the jobs at our manufacturers and we must want to grow our towns, whether that's through annexation or whatever. We must care about our history and historical preservation, but stop hoarding the empty past. Enable our boroughs, townships and cities to grow, adapt and change to compete with or support them in the marketplace for our next industry, our next industry, whether it is a surprise invention of a local resident, the growth into recreational marijuana, a remote work complex for a large digital company, or a renaissance of small towns created by the return to rail travel. We need to be aggressive and keep pushing as advocates for every opportunity. Now to address some common questions that are frequently asked. Regarding the community college, I believe it makes sense and I took advantage of leadership training through the Harrisburg Area Community College when I was mayor. I believe it helped me immensely. As far as its location, I believe it should be in an easily accessible location that is not on or near State or Peach Street, somewhere that is not in a congested, non-residential area, so it would be easily accessible to students. Regarding the LGBTQIA+ community and questions of policy, I simply say that hate has no place here. I would seek guidance on what needs addressed and where I can improve my own biases. And regarding the Black and African-American AIPA and communities of color, know that because I'm a fat white guy running for office from a district that's exceedingly near 96, 97 plus percent white, I'm not Rush Limbaugh. I'm not perfect. My grandfather, I recently found out, was in the Klan. My dad loved Archie Bunker so much that when we lived in Vegas, he took me to, took me downtown to meet Carol O'Connor in person when he was dressed in character. But I was raised by the mantra, "Do as I say, not as I do." I have pictures of me and my friends where we were described as a Benetton ad. Now, I know that being colorblind is not enough. I know that despite my having gone through homelessness and living in a car, being mugged and testifying against the person who did it to me and my dad at 11, losing my dad at 12, not having electricity or running water for a year, quitting school at 14, that my ability to pull myself up and work at 17 through today, thanks to family, friends of family and others, they knew it was a privilege of wealth I could draw on as a white person in America that most minorities do not have the privilege to draw on. And yet I know it doesn't diminish my accomplishments in coming back from being knocked down. Now, some local issues. I believe we need to realize the digital divide has not been closed yet. As someone who owns a computer store in Union City, I regularly get people asking for ideas on how to get improved internet access. They have satellite that's really slow or they don't have regular internet access. I've reached out to the county when they were putting together a program on increasing access, but I've never heard back. While ISPs like Spectrum provide special rates to families of students, there are large swaths of the county that they do not serve. It's promising that companies like T-Mobile and Starlink are ramping up rural service, but they are also not at 100% coverage. Remote learning in rural Erie County still means coming to school and using a laptop in the cafeteria for some students. While I'm thankful that this pandemic stuff is not permanent, this demonstrates that the gap is something we still need to close. Our local businesses were dramatically hit by the pandemic. Ensuring that the local businesses are included in the assistance the county is getting from the pandemic assistance is something that we need to focus on. We also need to make sure that the local communities are supported in the funding that we get so that we don't also raise taxes on those same local businesses. Some assistance might need to be given to public events. With the loss of Celebrate Erie, Roar on the Shore, the Bayhawks, OHL and other Erie-based events and across the county, we need to make sure that we... and across the county, we need to make sure that we give some sort of normalcy back to our community. I just want to make sure everyone has that same opportunity, whether they are knocked down or not, whether they're in the sixth district or the first district, and that Erie County becomes a growing county again. And I ask for your vote for Erie County Council on the ballot in the Democratic primary on Tuesday, May 18th. My name is Herbert Reedy. Thank you.